Did you see the sheet that came in?
How about the third graders, the essay winners, when do you want, which night do you want them to come? The twenty-seventh? They're gonna be out of school then. If you don't have meeting on the thirteenth.
No, when are they doing their thing?
They're not gonna be ready by the, by June sixth.
They're not?
Nope. So if you're not gonna have a meeting on the thirteenth, you're gonna be out of school by the twenty-seventh, they're ready.
What are you talking about?
You know, the Board of Selectmen for the day.
Last year we did it at the same time, we did the special annual town meeting. That was hard.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause he didn't wanna vote Ally a raise.
Yeah, I know that kid. What was his name? Yeah, I can't remember. I remember him now. He was not in Jackson's class this year.
They come to the meeting here at night, that's right?
Yeah.
Yes, so whether they're in school or not really...
Doesn't matter.
Yeah.
Really not. Won't do it on the sixth?
No.
It won't be ready?
It's too early, they won't be ready, the essays won't be ready.
Thirteenth?
Thirteenth, if we have a meeting, but...
Alright, well, we'll think about that.
That lady was Wendy? Her last name was G R A C A?
Yeah, Graca.
Do you remember her address?
Three Dr. Wray, I think it is.
Three, okay. So it's on here.
Anything else?
Yeah, yeah, so this thing here, we're gonna review this and then we're gonna sit down and talk about it in two weeks, right? Back here at the board.
I think that we should review it and then formulate our questions, send them to the town administrator or the administrative assistant and have them forward it to Jonathan. I know Jonathan's working on this for other towns. Or somebody else, so he might already have a lot of advantages that might not take long.
Okay, I'm, I'll, I'll read through this whole thing.
Yeah, I, I know. And then we have a meeting, when is that? May eighteenth?
Oh, sixteenth, isn't it?
Sixteenth.
May sixteenth is the next meeting, right? Yes.
No, no, the, and the Kushnet.
Oh, the Kushnet is the twelfth.
The twelfth?
Well, I think they have it too.
Twelve, I probably, probably.
Yeah, public care in May five twelve.
That's at the Ford.
Yeah.
Is it junior high? Ford Junior High, right?
It says middle school.
Oh, middle school, Ford Middle School.
It has the twelfth and the... Seven oh eight Middle Road.
Actually, it's not very far from where these people live, where we all live.
I think the eighteenth is with Burke.
Yeah, the eighteenth is with Burke.
But it's interesting because we haven't, we haven't had any correspondence.
Well, yeah, Jack just, Jack just had correspondence and he sent us an email and it's on the website now, right?
Yeah. What correspondence?
The one that was, there's, I think it was mostly telling you about these hearings that are coming up.
Yeah, that was the only call, yeah, otherwise, we haven't seen any people, like, we haven't had any more.
No, they haven't now moved back in.
Layouts, any of that stuff.
That's the last time they came in?
No, absolutely not, nothing.
Alright.
That's it?
That's it. Motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned, second, motion made to adjourn and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nobody opposed, that's it.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining, unanimous.
Okay.
Now that will start off next year. This one has to play.
Finish it, don't worry.
Talking about June, uh, July first.
Actually, no, the, the permit one's out.
January, January, book, January.
I just had one other thing with tobacco. There's a bill out there for increasing the age to, sales of tobacco to twenty-one. Pharmacies, they wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to sell anymore. And anywhere, you can't smoke a cigarette, workplace, you wouldn't be able to pay for an e-cigarette. So that's out there, and if it came into effect, it would be January two thousand something.
Those...
So we just tranked in our...
That was passed by the Senate.
Yes.
It's still a bunch of...
Yeah. Okay. Anything else?
Nothing, that's it.
And that's all the board health has, or back there?
What about mosquitoes, where are we with that? Do you, have you heard anything?
Uh, no, not, nothing, yeah, I get a lot of phone calls and I guess the, they're gonna be testing.
Okay.
And when they, then they'll be scheduling some spraying if they need it.
Okay.
Now, do people have the request to be sprayed, to have their property sprayed? Or is the state, 'cause I knew at one point you had a request...
Yeah, they, they're testing, they designate areas where they, they inform us.
No, but individual residents used to be able to call the Board of Health and then they would call Bristol County.
Yeah, Bristol County.
Okay, so people can still do that?
They can.
Okay.
I believe they also can contact Bristol County directly.
Yes.
Can they?
Yeah.
And then those, those lots of, those are the packets inside the intruders and all that.
Yeah, B T I. The... They have an email address and phone number, Bristol County.
Which one? Both of them?
A little too warm in the afternoon.
Hold each other's heads up. Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Good night.
Alright, now we send it over to...
Oh, I got my hat and my water over there.
Mr. Pacheco, the chairman of the Personnel Board.
They questioned me, I might as well question you.
Take care.
Bye. I have a letter from Bradford Paiva. Dear Selectmen and Finance Committee members, this letter is to inform you that I will be resigning my position on the Finance Committee mem, Finance Committee, both as a member and the chairman. I have served on this board for seven years, I feel that is time for a change. I wish to look for new challenges to serve the town in other positions if possible. I will continue with the board till the town meeting, after which my resignation will become effective. This will give the Finance Committee time to adjust. I wish to thank everyone on both boards for their help and understanding. Yours truly, Bradford P. Paiva. Well, that's just a kick in the pants.
Anyone say?
Motion accepted, letter of resignation.
Second.
I have a motion to second any further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, resigning, bye-bye, aye.
Aye. Thank you for your years of service.
And can we send Mr. Paiva a letter of thanks, please? Also, can you put something up on the town website?
Vacancies?
Yeah.
You already have vacancies on there, don't you?
Yeah.
How many do you have right now?
This'll make two.
Two vacancies?
This'll be two now, right?
This'll make two.
Okay. Oh, boy.
Oh, boy.
Everybody's leaving the nest. I have a letter here from Robert Joe, who's vice chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals. He's resigning his position of the board. He does so after careful consideration of his new position on the Board of Selectmen. Since the Selectmen appoint the members of the Z B A, I am concerned that there may be an appearance of a conflict of interest. I have greatly enjoyed my time on the board. I was first appointed as an alternate member to the board, later I was appointed to a member position. About a year ago, I was voted to vice chair by the other members on the board. Over the years, I have learned a great deal about zoning and the town in general. I have enjoyed my time on the board very much, I have come to meet some of the nicest people. And you will continue to do so.
I hope so.
Both as fellow members of the board and also as applicants and professionals that come before us. So in closing, I'd like to thank the board and the townspeople for allowing me to have this great opportunity in serving them as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. It has been a very rich and rewarding experience that I will treasure for the rest of my life. Very truly yours, Robert P. Joe's. Do you have a motion to accept?
I'm, I'm abstaining, Mrs. Chairman.
Yes, thank you.
I'll make a motion to accept Mr. Joe's resignation with a letter of thank you sent to him.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Again, I abstain.
Right, do they, they will need to appoint another member, so can you put that also on the town website? They still have, um...
We do have an alternate.
Okay.
They do have an alternate.
Takes time. Alright, do you have a motion to reappoint Lisa Pedeski as Animal Control Officer effective April thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen?
So move, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you have a motion to reappoint Robert Clibeca as Veteran, Veterans Agent as of March thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen?
So move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, can I have a, a motion to reappoint the members of the Tax Increment Board?
Should I read?
Um, I can't, they're upside down. Jack Healy, Paul Dunn, Bradford Paiva, Sheila Scaduto, myself, Kevin Dismaris, and Jessica Thomas. But I would like to take me off of it, 'cause I think it's the chair, so it would have to be Mr. Sadek.
I'll make a motion with that change.
All those in favor?
I didn't hear a second.
Aye, oh, I didn't hear a second, I'll second that, all those in favor?
How can you wait, but you, you made the motion and then you seconded?
No, he made the motion.
Oh, and you seconded? Well, I'm the only one not on, mentioning you decided, so, so what are you saying now? So you called, did you call the vote?
All those in favor? You wanna discuss this?
No.
Okay, I'll discuss it, it's the chair that usually... The chair is the person that is on the Tax Increment Board, so...
Alright, so you, let's hear the vote, I wanna hear the vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay, nothing.
Okay.
Alright, motion to reappoint Jack Healy to the J T P G Group. Joint Transportation Planning Group. And also designate Lauren as our, Lauren Moreau as our alternate.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's discuss a project for Board Selectmen Representatives to Surada. Go ahead, Paul.
You missed one, you missed the one about Bristol County Advisory Board.
Okay.
I've been on that for, forever, I don't mind doing that one.
For both the Bristol County one, okay?
Yeah, I don't mind doing that one.
Alright, so you wanna do that one, but you don't wanna not do Surada, okay?
I've been doing Surada for like, four and a half years.
When do they meet?
Once a month, usually on a Thursday, it's usually the last...
Is it a day meeting though, or is it...
No, it's not, it's at five o'clock.
Alright, I'll do it. It's gonna be five.
Alright, so, I mean, I'll take the Bristol County if that's okay.
Alright, so, let's have a motion to approve Mr. Sadek as the Bristol County Advisory Board Member. Do you have a motion?
So move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And let's have Mr. Joe's be the Board Selectmen Representative for Surada. Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
I'll second it. I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
These guys are very difficult tonight, very difficult.
Good thing there's somebody running the show here.
Giant fist, hold the globe.
Um, do, can, I know we're gonna go over new business, can we just make that Monday, June thirteenth meeting, like, if we need one? Because we're having the annual town meeting, like, right before that.
The sixth of the town meeting.
Yeah, I know.
Where do you see June thirteenth?
On the list of meetings.
On the list of meetings? We not, we might not need one so close after, I'm not sure.
June thirteenth?
Yeah.
I don't see it yet.
New business.
New business, Monday, June sixth, and then Monday, June thirteenth. Oh, you don't have it on yours?
I don't have it on mine, I printed it on...
Ah.
So which, yeah, I, mine doesn't show it.
Do you have it?
I have it, yeah.
I have it too.
What's right, Ally?
That's a meeting no one wanted you at.
Maybe you printed yours too early, we might have to change them.
Okay, so what do we wanna do?
Well, let's just, like, highlight that, like, if we need to have a meeting on Monday, June thirteenth, we can have it, but if not, I mean, we have...
You said the same thing about May thirty-first, correct?
Right, 'cause somebody's not gonna be here, right?
I'm not gonna be here.
You're not gonna be here on the thirty-first, so we all need the thirty-first, right? 'Cause we got one, we're gonna have one that on June sixth.
We're gonna have one on June sixth, it's gonna be quite lengthy.
The board's having this meeting quite before us?
Yeah, I mean, we'll review everything, so...
That's another meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, review, special meeting.
Yeah.
Would this be a good time to let you know that I won't be able to attend your main night's meeting?
Why?
Main night, no, we don't have one, we don't have one on May ninth.
You don't now?
Good, you don't have to tell us you can't attend.
Yes, I know.
Good.
'Cause that would be next week, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have anything next Monday.
We have May sixteenth, right? Yeah, so if anything comes up, we can piggyback right on that.
On what?
The one that'll make sure she chooses one.
That's the seventeenth, seventeen.
Right, so if we have to, we can piggyback anything on that.
Okay.
Okay.
Ally, have we heard anything from the school on the third grade thing?
Yeah, you wanna do it the week of the sixth, because Bob's out the week before, so... If you wanna do it anytime that week.
Is that when Bob gets a chance to talk to the...
Third graders?
Third graders?
Third graders. At least we can see eye to eye, they're in the same mentality as I am.
What day is good that week for you guys?
Probably the Wednesdays, how Wednesdays for you?
Just goes to me.
Usually at two o'clock.
What is it, Ally?
What's the date?
Let's see what the date is.
It's the eighth, it's June eighth, it's Wednesday.
Yeah. That's okay with me. Supposed to be getting my boat ready to go on the water, but...
Can we let the police chief and the fire chief know?
We always ask Chuck, but...
Did we ask him last week?
No.
Oh, okay.
Just the chief.
Alright.
You know, let's call it a kiss to Chuck.
Glad you said that. I hope we could hear that one. Alright, are we good now on, on dates?
Yes.
And then the last thing under old business is the water agreement. I can tell you that I got an email today from Jonathan Silverstein, a copy of the email that he sent back to the City of Far River. He had sent to the city solicitor and the water superintendent a proposal, proposed change, minor change, a couple of weeks ago. That's when the city solicitor was on vacation, and then we had school vacation, and Jonathan was on vacation, a couple of guys. So he sent a new reminder over there with a copy of what he was proposing. So that's where we stand right now. I, you know, I think it's very, 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 very close to be undone.
Do you have a meeting tomorrow night?
Do we?
Oh, you?
I have a meeting tomorrow night. I have a meeting at the...
The school, right?
No, I don't have a meeting at the school tomorrow, no.
On Wednesday?
That's next, next Tuesday night, and I can't make that meeting.
Okay.
Alright, but the board opted to go up the bid, and, and because the board took that action to go up the bid, the town, and I know Ms. Pacheco said it wasn't relevant, but had we not done that, and we went with the first proposal, the townspeople would be paying four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars more for three years, for over a three-year period than we're gonna pay now. It's a substantial savings, almost a half a million dollars, which is very substantial in my eyes when it comes to money. Also, as we compared that to other proposals by the same two people, at one point, the difference between the bid, the lowest bid was two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, then it was the two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollar difference. And at one point, it was two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollar difference. So really, I have to commend the entire board that was sitting at the time and the current board to accept the low bid. And as a caveat, today I read that in, the gentleman from Ally just said that instead of getting your recycling picked up every other week, they're gonna do it every week, all for the same bid price. So I think it's, it's, it's important that the, our town residents, our taxpayers know that the board saved four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of their tax dollar over a three-year period. Okay, let's go on. There's a request for a reserve fund transfer. You're also, thank you, sir. There was a request for a reserve fund transfer made by the Board of Selectmen through Mr. Healy for eight thousand one hundred and nine dollars and thirty-one cents. This is for legal bills, and there's gonna be subsequent requests for transfers because we know that our Finance Committee, they will not act on transfers unless you're pretty much out of money. So we're gonna pass this request for transfer on to the Finance Committee if the Board of Selectmen chooses to approve it. Because our balance in our legal account is down to one thousand four hundred and four dollars. So I'd ask the board if they would consider passing that on to the Finance Committee for approval for a transfer from the reserve fund.
Make a motion to send to the Finance Committee in the amount of eighty-one oh nine thirty-one.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Thank you.
Alright, the next thing is to approve the Board of Selectmen's meeting minutes from, I believe, the last meeting that we had. Ally, at the last meeting, I think Mr. Joe's had found a couple of errors, you, those are, you think, correct, right?
Um, this one was from the nineteenth. This one was from the nineteenth, that wasn't, I think, this...
Okay, no, no, I mean the one, oh, you went in the last time, we had some errors on the...
Previous one.
On the previous one?
Yeah, those are all...
Those are all set, okay. Alright. Anybody find anything wrong with these minutes?
The only thing I didn't notice, maybe I'm just pissing it, when Lisa joined the meeting.
Yeah, it said, um...
Lisa came in late.
Yeah, it says, under six fifteen, it says Selectmen, Ms. Pacheco has arrived, didn't join the meeting.
Has arrived, okay.
Have arrived.
At six fifteen.
Um, there was a, there was a little discussion between Carlton and myself, and I actually...
That was a very pleasant discussion.
We have since talked, but I didn't say that he was understaffed. I said I didn't agree with the numbers as presented, that's what I said. I, otherwise I wouldn't have voted to add another, another police officer, so...
Are you correcting something in the minutes?
Yes.
So what are you correcting?
Because it said, Lisa Pacheco said that the police department was not understaffed, not at all what I said.
So what do you wanna change here?
This is going down in history, you know, so that's why we gotta get it right.
It says she doesn't believe the department is understaffed. Actually, what I said was I didn't, I didn't believe the numbers as proposed by Chief Abbott, but I did think that we needed another police officer. We had a difference of opinion on how the numbers came about. Remember, we talked about Ben Levesque, the S R O officer, and...
Here at the meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah?
We did.
Can we verify that on the tape?
Go right ahead, I, I'd love to see some of those tapes.
I'm only kidding, I'm only kidding. I'm only kidding.
Anyway.
Can we make that change, sir?
Yeah.
And then they're approved? Or you want...
Yeah, that's fine, I'll start with that right then, I...
Mr. Joe's?
Make a motion with those changes, to accept.
Second.
Motion made in second to accept the minutes after they're changed with the exact wording that Ms. Pacheco just used?
Yeah, because that sounds really bad, she doesn't believe the department is understaffed, no way did I not say that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, unanimous, good, that's done. Alright, next thing on the agenda, there's been a request by the Tuesday Club for the use of a Sonata Bandstand for the Strawberry Festival on June nineteenth, between eleven and four. Is June nineteenth Father's Day?
It always is.
It usually is, right?
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the use of the Sonata Bandstand for the Tuesday Club for the Strawberry Festival, it's delicious. If you're a guy like me that doesn't mind eating sweets, it's delicious. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You wouldn't pick a strawberry, would you, did you?
Huh?
You wouldn't pick a strawberry, would you, did you?
He was Mr. Strawberry.
Mr. Strawberry.
Fathers did too for the Christmas one.
Alright, next thing on the agenda is approve a schedule for a new cruiser lease. Submitted by the police chief.
Hello?
So... Identical to the previous leases we submitted, this is through Ford Financing Company. It's a three-year lease, at the termination of the third year, for the cost of a dollar, the town owns the vehicle.
Straightforward, closed-end lease.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the cruiser lease, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, that's okay. Town Administrator is up next.
Yes, Chairman Members of the Board, the past week have been busy, to say the least, since the last board meeting I attended. I've attended the building committee meeting, spent much of my time preparing for the trash and recycling bid opening yesterday. Worked on trying to get the solar credits project moving forward, I'll go on that, I'll put the board in an email soon. The M S four stormwater management report, which was due and submitted prior to the May first deadline. Sending an email at the board's request to Old Colony to request additional information for budgeting purposes. And scheduling attendance at two Maya trainings in May, for which the town will receive Maya credits against our, our insurance bills. You have a reserve fund transfer request, which you just acted on for legal budget. And finally, I would request that you consider appointing Lauren as my alternate on the joint transportation planning group at Surped at the, at your meeting later on today, tonight rather. You have that on the agenda as well. At the time that you appoint me as the J T P G representative, I request that Lauren, who I've talked to and who is willing to perform that role as she does for the Surped Board when I'm unable to attend. She's always been very good at working on Surped-related projects, and I think it would benefit the town. Thank you. Any questions?
Okay, next thing on the agenda is discussion, discussion and approve tobacco fees and a tobacco program, right?
Yeah, that's adding on to the program.
Can you identify yourself, or what do you do?
Board of Health Asia. Currently, we, in our tobacco program, we permit each establishment. In doing so, we go out and educate them, give them some materials. Later on, we're supposed to do compliance checks, where we go in with underage minors and see if they can actually purchase, see if our program is working. We haven't done that yet in Freetown, the state currently does that, and gives us some feedback. So we're looking to stop those compliance checks. When I checked with, how to get those individuals trained and on staff, Ken had told me each one needs a W nine. I spoke to an old colleague of mine that actually runs the collaborative in Far River. And she said that she's willing to do this program for us for thirty dollars a store, which I thought was a no-brainer. The only problem with that is, we currently only charge twenty-five dollars per establishment, which is pretty cheap. I think Lakeville's the only other one that does that, everyone else I'll just rattle them off. Middle Borough's a hundred, Berkeley is one twenty-five, Dutton is one twenty-five, Somerset is fifty, Far River's one twenty-five. So to at least cover ourselves, I was thinking to increase our fees to at least thirty dollars, or even possibly looking in the future to kind of be where everybody else is. Because with that program, I'm sorry, with that program, you gotta get the regulations to them, you gotta get the signage to them, education. 'Cause you wanna, you wanna get them on the right road and bring in the compliance checks.
Okay, I just wanna specify something, I made a mistake... Okay, I just wanna specify something, I made a mistake, this is under, selectmen Jones is, is the head of the Board of Health, so I shouldn't have started, I'm sorry about that, sir.
That's okay, and we don't have to reiterate, I understand your position. Anybody else, have any, putting any questions? I have one, currently, we're charging twenty-five, correct, and that covers, you are, you are going, you are going to the facility, the signage, all that stuff now?
Yes.
Okay, so the thirty dollars, really, if we did that, those checks would eat up all of that, and the rest would come out of your budget.
Correct.
So, why wouldn't we, and to the board, why wouldn't we just increase the fee from twenty-five to fifty-five, so it would cover what he's, what currently they're doing, plus the inspections?
Because I'm always the one that wants to raise fees.
It's a minor fee, it's fifty-five dollars, and this is what, annually?
Yes.
Annual fee, that's an annual fee.
Fifty-five dollars, it's half the most...
Yeah, I think the average came out to, out of all these towns, came out eighty-seven dollars.
Eighty-seven dollars.
And every facility that needs a license is gonna have a visit at some point in that phenomenal...
So, right now, my round of inspections, I'm going around, I'm handing them the whole package, I'm handing them the regulations, I'm checking all the signs, we discussed the fines, we discussed carting, we just discussed everything that was going on, and then I let them know that a compliance check will happen at some point.
So, all those places will have a compliance check?
At some point, yeah.
Okay, I'll make the motion using the language that Mr. Jones used to raise the fee to fifty-five, because that's the, sort of, the cost of the compliance check.
Yes.
Second.
I have a motion made in second to raise the fee from thirty dollars current, I mean, excuse me, twenty-five dollars currently to the, some fifty-five dollars annually.
I mean...
I mean, it's common sense, right?
Last year...
Why are you lying about a common sense question?
Last year, they hooked up another house on Dr. Grayley Road, okay, and they put the connector in the ground, but it was too close to the roadway, they had to come back and fix it, so they dug up the road, I mean, for somebody to say to you, they don't dig up the road, come on, they come to us, so they can cut the road, so they can lay the pipe to somebody's house.
Well, and, and the other great thing about this is the project is gonna bring all these jobs, all these local jobs, he was from Georgia, and...
I don't think the project's gonna bring any local jobs.
It's not gonna bring any, you have to be specialized and trained in this stuff, and there's nobody around here that is, there're going to be people from Texas and out of the country, there's no, there's no benefit to us at all whatsoever for this project to happen, so, I just wanted to see if we could just get some more dialogue going about it.
Absolutely.
I feel like we've, I feel like we've spent a lot of concentration on the cushion portion of it, and they definitely tie into each other, and they're both very scary, I mean, if something happens to the cushion at one, I'm not that far, I could go kaboom from that too, easily.
Even with the existing tanks in the cushion?
Right.
We might go kaboom.
Right, but, but what they're trying to put in, not only is completely different capacity-wise, but it's also different in what it's doing, and there's way more risks, and there's emissions, and there's all sorts of health issues, ongoing, every day, never mind target, you know, terrorist targets and accident things and all that, that's completely separate, just every day, breathing the garbage that's coming out from that plant, is gonna be different than what's there now, because it's trucked in and trucked out now, there it's going to be liquidated, it's gonna be processing, it's going to be changing it over and changing it back, and it's just, it's bad, but I just wanted to bring it back to Freetown, because I care about Freetown just as much, so...
I agree.
Okay, we'll go over this, we'll just put it on, Ellie, could you put it on for the agenda?
Thank you, which is two weeks from now.
Okay, thank you.
And what we'll do is, by that time, the board will have time to look at this, and maybe come up with their own questions, and at that time, we can take, talk about it, take a vote, whatever we, the board decides to do.
I'd be more than happy to also do my own research and investigations as to what other towns are physically doing, and bring that back to you next time, and say, here are some options for the town, you know, whatever I can do to help.
Would it help to have a separate meeting with Senator Rodrick and Rep. Schmidt to sit down with all of you and have a frank discussion about this, and see exactly where they're at?
Sure, we're up for all the meetings.
I mean, we can set something like that up...
Sure.
Where we can just have a frank discussion about...
What we're facing.
What are their intentions as well, because it's all right for us to fight, but our state reps should follow our direction, and I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page.
I agree.
I, I'm, I would bet that they will attend the meeting in, in a cushion on the twelfth.
I hope so.
Because they were at, the last two meetings that were held in a cushion, because I was there, and they were there.
But I, but it's not just enough to attend, they need to know, the people that are there are not for this, we're not here to cheer you on, you know, it's important that they know.
You said you had discussions with them already?
Yes, we've also, not with those reps, we've had quite a few, but, yep, we actually gave a presentation to the city and Bedford City Council about two, three weeks ago, because although this is a cushion at Freetown, it affects them too, their emergency response crews would have to come out, and they've got all the leaks and everything in their, in their area, and it's just, it's, it's a bigger issue than just our little local towns, and when we were done, twenty minutes, they agreed, and so...
Did they, what did they do?
They, they put it on to, to talk about for their next meeting, and they were going to make a motion to talk about it, and I don't know what they were gonna do about the next, we were asking them at the time to sign on with some letters that were being sent out, they were group letters, that towns and other cities were, were signing on to in opposition, being sent in, and they said that they would do that, so...
Is that in this package, too?
No, that's not, this is, that one's more about the Pennsylvania stuff, and how we can do it individually, but I can get that information.
Yeah, send that.
I will.
All right, you can, you know, my email, right? Okay, fine, okay, I know, I know.
Check Facebook.
Me too.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
I just wanna make sure everybody...
Thanks, Paul.
I just want to make sure...
Can you, like, delete that from, thank you.
Cannot delete any time.
Some things are sacred.
Anybody else wanna talk about this? You all set? All right, so, two weeks.
We'll see you in two weeks, thank you.
Two weeks, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Anybody else want to address the board's slide?
Thank you. Anybody else for a public discussion? Okay.
All right, with that, let's go on to the next agenda item, which is, which is awarded trash recycling contract. I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Healy, and to Tom, in our health agent.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we had the bid opening recently, this past week, and, on Wednesday, and there were four bidders, you have all the information on the results of those bids, and Dan Higgins from Allied Waste Services is in the hall, Dan, you wanna raise your hand? Allied was the, was the low bidder, and you have that information as well. The chairman put together a very complete summary of the, of the bids that we opened on Wednesday, as well as previous proposals that have been submitted by Mr. Borges and by Mr. Holland. Allied Waste Services bid, for the three years of the agreement, was one million seven thousand eight sixty-eight, that was the low bid, followed by Holland disposal, one million one hundred thousand two thirty-one twenty-three, ninety-two thousand three hundred and sixty-three twenty-three, above the low bid of Allied. The, the third bidder was Borges Brothers, at one million one sixty-two, seven twenty-eight forty-two, which is a hundred and fifty-four thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars and forty-two cents above the low bid, and finally, Easy Disposal and Recycling, was bid for the three years, was one million one ninety-three five fifty-six, or a hundred and eighty-five thousand six eighty-eight, above the low bid of Allied. Paul's presentation also recorded the previous proposals as against the, from Borges and Holland, as against the low bid, and Borges's proposal was, his first proposal was four hundred and seventy-five thousand thirty-two dollars higher than the low bid, it was open last Wednesday.
I really believe that that's relevant, I think we're only here to deal with the top four right now, I don't think that that's relevant anymore.
I'm just referencing Mr. Zadix's information for the board. The bid package, as, as you can see from the information that's been supplied to you, made it very clear that the bid was to be awarded to the responsible, responsive bidder who offered the lowest price, that would be Allied Waste Services of Massachusetts. We also followed the bid opening with calling on a number of the Massachusetts communities that were included in, in Allied's proposal, this is that proposal, by the way, and in section six, they listed all, all the Massachusetts communities that they serve, and half a ream of letters of recommendation. We picked the five that were closest to our town, and Kevin contacted all of those, we've sent you copies of his note sheets on those telephone conversations with Somerset, a cushion, no...
Sharon.
Sharon.
East Bridgewater.
Yeah.
East Randolph, Canton, Somerset.
Yeah, Randolph and Canton, and East Bridgewater, and you have all the results of those discussions, and all of the, all of the conversations were positive with respect to the services that have been provided by Allied to those communities, in some cases for ten to twenty years. So, the question before you is the award of the contract to Allied Waste Services of Massachusetts, in the amount of one million seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-six, sixty-eight dollars. And where's the board's pleasure?
I have questions.
Go ahead.
The analysis that was done, did you do line item analysis between all the bidders to make sure that everything was apples to apples?
Yes.
Okay, was this reviewed by town council?
Yes.
Okay. I have some questions for you as well, any hidden costs, like, do we have to purchase, like, another year from now, we gonna have to purchase bins from you?
No.
Okay, so, we're just gonna be able to go with the stickers on whatever we have, and buy our trash bags from, so there's no other additional cost?
Correct.
Okay, to the homeowner or to the town?
No.
Okay, and any restrictions?
Other than what's outlined in the town's program, I wanted, you know, we know that the town was facing a disposal increase when it come up this fall, so we looked at, trying to be as efficient as we could in terms of offering services to the town, we offer a coal collection vehicle, which means that we'll expand the recycling collection from every other week to weekly, fifty-two weeks a year, so that's the only change we have coming forward.
Mr. Jones? And the recycling's gonna be still a single stream, it's not gonna be a saw-up?
Correct, the, you know, the towns are specifically defined that, and where it's going, and that's what we proposed on.
Those residents that don't currently use totes or barrels are still gonna be able to put their green bags out without being in a barrel?
Any other questions? Anybody gonna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept Allied Waste Services' three-year bid, one million seven thousand six hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Second.
Motion made in second, accept Allied's bid, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I do wanna comment on this here, I have to commend the, the board, the sitting board at the time, when, when it was time to renew the contract, we had a bid, not a bid, a proposal, and then somebody else came in to make a proposal, and, which caused the town to start looking at what was going on, because the second proposal from another company came in substantially lower, and there was two or three proposals made between two bidders, and at a, a meeting that we held, probably two meetings ago, the board voted to go out to bid. Now, trash does not have to...
Of the Access Northeast Project, as a resident of the town, I'm not even sleeping at night anymore, I don't know if you're aware of it, but there was an explosion in Pennsylvania on Friday. I just put some packets here, those information for everybody.
Thank you.
All right, to make it fast, the pipeline there was five hundred yards from the house, it was thirty inches wide, they wanted to put a twenty-four inch wide pipeline at the end of my driveway, five hundred yards from the house, the house is gone, all that's left is bricks, and the man has burns to his body, two-thirds of his body, and he's in critical condition, and, and he survived because he ran from the house when he heard the rumbling of the explosion. This is not an acceptable thing, this should not be put near somebody's home, and this is a rural area, the, the closest house to him is across the street, forty acres away, and the siding on their house is melted, the tires on their cars are melted into the, into the ground, houses half a mile away have siding melted, just from the heat, not fire, the heat from the fire, the fire was contained within just the field, crops are damaged, and goodness, they didn't have any cattle, they will actually bring in cattle next week, that would've been all dead, the point is, this doesn't belong in a residential area, it doesn't, and, and what I'm asking Freetown to do, I know that you've already stated that you're not for the project, I get that, I've also heard, there's nothing we can do on this level, there's, but there is, you need to get vocal, we need you to back us, we need our town representatives to be looking out for our best interests, and as a resident here for ten years, and my in-laws for forty years, this is going in near them, this is going in near us, this is dangerous, this is scary, and it's not for us, it's not for the benefit of us, the town's getting nothing as a result of this, except sleepless nights, that's what I'm getting. I didn't buy my land and build my house two, two miles from my in-laws ten years ago, so I could take care of them as they got older, so that I could never sleep at night, it's just not acceptable, and I get that it's a federal thing, and that it's a government thing, and that it's a state thing, but if the local towns, if the town on a local level do not start speaking out for its residents, they're never gonna get us, so we need the town, the town can do things, you cannot pass laws, I get that, but there are other towns that are adopting resolutions to help protect its, its residents, there are towns that are writing into FERC and expressing as a town that we don't want this here, that's what we're asking you to do, we're asking you to do what you can do, I'm not asking you to do what you can't do, I'm asking you to do what you can do, on our, on our behalf, and I speak for a lot of people, but I'm here to speak for myself, I'm not going to say names and stuff like that, but I know there's a lot of people who feel the same way, but this is what I'm asking of our town representatives, that's all.
Jack, you've had several phone calls, but what is the latest update?
The, there are gonna be some public hearings begun again.
And that information is contained in the packet.
There's gonna be one in a cushion, right?
May twelfth.
May twelfth.
There's also one, May eighteenth, there's the Energy Siding Board Facilities is having a hearing, and then FERC is having their scoping hearings as well, we're asking representatives of our town to, to show up at that, and also speak up against it there, too, there's, I've included for your ease, instructions on how to write to FERC, how to submit e-comments, all the different ways that you can help, showing up at the hearings, I even included a letter that Specter sent to me regarding the hearings, along with the information and everything there.
My other question to you is, have you talked to any of the state reps or the senator?
Yes, oh, yes, oh, yeah, yeah, we, this is a grassroots effort that's happening across the state, this isn't just... This isn't just us. It's going in Sharon, Stoughton, Millis, Canton. It's all over the place. There's multiple projects in the works. And we're really pushing back, but, and there are towns that are actually forming coalitions, town coalitions, fighting this. You might've just heard about the Northeast Direct being killed. Yeah. We wanna do that. We wanna keep doing that. And that's because the town stepped up and helped them with it, too.
Who would you like us to do?
It's all outlined in the packet to make it easy for you, but I'm asking you to be vocal. Send in letters on behalf of your residents that are concerned for their safety and their property values and their health, their families, their animals, the wildlife out here. Spectra doesn't give a crap about any of that stuff. They care about their pockets. That's what they care about.
That's what all the companies care about.
I know that. I know that. I know. And so we need to fight back against that.
I live right up the street from you. I live in the same area you just talked about.
Yeah.
I've been there forty-two years. Do I like the idea? No, I don't like the idea.
Right.
And you're gonna neighbor right behind you that is even, well, probably about the same distance that you do. So, you know, I mean-
But, but people have this mentality that there's nothing we can do, and it's not true. It's not true. And even if, even if it comes through, as long as I know I fought tooth and nail and I did what I could, but to just lay over, lay down and take it, I'm not gonna do that. And I'm asking my town not to do that as well. I pay taxes here, I vote here. I'm a loyal town person. I've been here ten years, but my husband's been here his entire life. I moved here for his family. I didn't do that so I could lay awake at night stressing about breathing in methane leaking from pipelines and such. I mean, you're talking about a company that claims to have a safety track record, but you know what? They, they have more than three hundred leaks in the city of New Bedford alone that they're not fixing.
There's, there's gas leaks everywhere.
Yeah, there is. But explain to me how they can claim a safe track record and that they maintain their lines when there's over three hundred leaks in New Bedford, one of which is nineteen years old.
I guess they can say anything they want.
Because they're liars, is what they are. So I'm just asking for, for backup. That's what I'm asking. I'm asking for some action, what you can do, not what you can't do, but there's something you can do. And that's what I'm asking.
Well, I think if the board agrees, can we put this on our agenda and come to some type of discussion at our next meeting? It's not on the agenda for tonight, but we can talk about it at our next meeting and maybe come up with something.
Yeah.
Would you like to put a warrant on, an article on the warrant, have a formal response from the town?
We wouldn't need that. We would just need it from the board.
I understand that, but a town vote would be, we could represent the entire town.
What would we say? That we wanna ban gas in town?
More gas. More gas. We're not-
There is gas on Dr. Bailey Road.
Oh, I understand. I know the, I know the whole story.
You know, other concerns that I have is that there is already an existing pipeline in the town that goes RSH under metrics, which is where they wanna tap into this and expand it.
Yeah, and this pipeline's right over here.
Do we know how old those pipelines are? Do we know what the size of those pipelines are? Do we know what the pressure is? Do we know what the emergency response system is for those? What's, what's the plan? What's in place for the ones that exist? The one that exploded in Pennsylvania was from the eighties.
Well, look, think about this. There's gas lines everywhere.
I agree.
Anywhere you can have an explosion.
I understand that. So why increase the risks and-
I'm not, I'm not arguing-
Like veins in the earth, it's ridiculous.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not arguing against you at all. Please, don't, don't take it that way. I'm just saying, there's gas lines everywhere. There could be an explosion anywhere. That's, that's the issue. I understand what you're saying. We don't need additional gas lines. Fine with that, but, I mean, those gas lines that have been in there, that come right up, in fact, they're right near my house. I mean, they've been there a long time.
I'm concerned for, for those as well. That's why I'm not just talking about the new ones, I'm talking about the old ones. What's the inspection history of those? Because the one that exploded in Pennsylvania was last inspected in two thousand twelve and was found to have no problems. So much for no problems.
All right. Can, I'd like a week to review this, okay? I'd like to have the board, through the chair, direct a set of questions to Jonathan, including the recommendation from Slickman-Jose on a warrant article, if that's possible, and if that would hold any merit. Even though it may make a statement, I don't know if it will, you know what I'm saying? And then it also could have an adverse response, because then it could, you know, all your intentions could also go the other way. So if the town is in favor of it, then, well, you know what I mean? So I'd like, I'd like to review it for a week, and then I'd like to formally leave some questions to Copeland Page.
Okay.
She mentioned Jonathan. Those are our attorneys.
Yeah, Copeland Page.
Do you want an email address or a phone number for me, in case you wanna reach out to me with any questions?
Sure.
Wendy Graca, G-R-A-C-A, at AOL dot com. And my cell is five oh eight, two five four, six three three three.
It's all the same, it's the same thing.
Nope. It's changed. Just for beer. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have a question for the town as well.
Your name, please.
Jan McHumber. What they have told us is that the new pipeline is gonna be twenty-four inches in diameter. That's big. The pipelines that are in the ground now are much smaller.
Pipe lines, yeah, they're about, I think they're nine, nine or ten inches.
Eighteen.
The ones that go down-
It's smaller than that.
Oh, the ones that you're feeding the house. I'm talking about the one that they wanna tap into. That one's eighteen inches wide.
That's the one off of Ransville Drive.
Right.
They, they say that they're twenty-four inches wide, and they're gonna go through the road. Now, the road is town property, so are you investigating what's gonna be your responsibility for that? Because they're not responsible for any damage that they do. It lies within the property holder and the town, if it's on town property. The other thing is that they've told us that it's gonna be down three feet. Three feet is not a very big depth for these pipes to be down, when there are eighteen-wheelers going down Keen Road, six at a time. I mean, they've had some pretty heavy traffic lately that's been going up and down that road. And to have an eighteen-wheeler constantly going over this pipe that's only in the ground three feet is a very big concern for me. You know, over a month, that's a lot of, of traffic, but over years, that's even more. So what's their liability if these pipes break? You know, what are they gonna do? If my house blows up, are they gonna pay for it? Are you gonna pay for it? Is my insurance gonna pay for it? Am I gonna be around to have anybody pay for it? These are the big concerns that I have as far as this going in. Have you received any speculation? Like, the people here today had to have their road approved, and they had to have diagrams of it. Has, have Spectra and Eversource brought you any plans of what they're gonna do?
Absolutely not.
Do they have to get, do they have to get approval to survey town, like streets?
Well, that's what we, that was denied.
Well, they're do, they did it.
No, that would, for them to come into the, run to the forest and any of the properties, we denied that.
But the road- They surveyed Dr. Bailey Road. I, they were right outside my house, I took pictures of them and everything.
The road.
The road's a public way.
The road is town property.
They do that.
Road's fine.
But it's owned by the town.
It's a public way.
But the, where the fields are, the forest part of it, that was denied.
Yeah, the, you're talking about the conservation property.
Right.
That was denied by the town.
I had to have blueprints to have a chicken coop built in my yard. Why don't they have to have plans of what they're gonna do?
I'm sure when they come, they're gonna have to have plans, and they're gonna have to come in for a road cutting, I would assume. So under the road permit for the road cutting is where some of that can probably be addressed. Now, I'm speculating, so, you know, like, usually, you know, NSTAR comes in for a road cutting or something like that, so, Eversource or whatever it's called now. I'm assuming Verizon, they all have to do that, so I'm assuming they're gonna have to do the same thing. And when that time comes, you know, that's when we can ensure different things.
Can we make sure that they have to do that? Because they seem to do things all on their own.
That's one of my questions right here.
You have to. They cannot, no one can cut a town road without have, go through a road commission. And board of selectmen, it's a road commissions.
I just worry, because they do a lot of things without permission.
And I went out and asked the guy some questions, and he lied right to my face about stuff, right to my face. Oh, I said, "So if you're gonna put it under the road, what happens if there's an incident and you have to access it? Do you dig up the road again?" And he said, "Oh, I've been doing this twenty years, we've never done, we've never had to dig up a road, we've never had an incident." I have six pictures of me driving by in the last month, New Bedford, Acushnet, Free Town, where they're on the side digging up the road, cones everywhere. Liar. You're a liar.
Well, certainly they dig up the road if they have to.
That's, that's the question I asked.
If they have to.
No, we never have to do that.
Ready? All right. We're gonna open the board of selectmen's meeting Monday, May second, two thousand and thirteen. President Ah, Paul Sadik, Lisa Pacico, Ron Jones, three selectmen, Jack Healy, Tom Administrator, Alec Alsar, administrative assistant. Anybody recording the meeting?
Free cam.
Free cam. Anybody else recording the meeting? Oh, okay. Very good. The first thing on the agenda is a public meeting regarding the acceptance of Costa Drive. Anybody here representing Costa Drive? Want sir?
Should I go?
Anybody else? One up. For the record, can you state your name?
Brad Fitzgerald, SFG Associates Engineering.
Engineering call for Costa Drive?
We did the ASK engineer.
Okay. Your name, ma'am?
Antonia Costa. Anthony Costa's daughter.
Okay. All right. So we, the town of Free Town received a request for the board of selectmen to lay out Costa Drive as a public way. This was, a letter was sent to any abut within three hundred feet of that property in that roadway, and it was also posted at the town hall. So we're gonna begin the layout and then take the votes by the board of selectmen. The planning board sent the board of selectmen a letter dated April twenty-second. This letter is to serve to inform you that the planning board voted to recommend Costa Drive for acceptance at, at the town meeting. So the planning board is good with Costa Drive. And anybody have any questions regarding Costa Drive up here at the board? No?
No.
Do you wanna explain what's going on?
Sure. This road, it's been going for a while. It's been, it's about a seventy-five foot long road, it's seventy foot wide right-of-way with about twenty-four feet of pavement, four catch basins and a detention basin at the end of the side.
Might I put it up here?
Sure.
These plans were also available at the town clerk's office, right near the, through here.
So the road was put in pretty much to the approved plans, both in vertically and horizontal. It's a little, it's offset because it's a seventy-foot wide right-of-way. You get the detention basin down here, it's got the settling basin probably going in there. And then it gives us a doorway with a, a wear on the back end of the detention basin. They're all constructed to, within problems that they made of the approved plans. It's a very well-maintained basin, the only better ones I've seen maintained. It is within a drainage management that encompasses two lots down at the end. And that's pretty much what we have.
How long did it take since the final, sort of asphalt was put down?
I can tell you that's been years, I believe, man?
Yes.
It's the final curve?
Back in, let's see where it is. Looks like, that's what I have to.
Any cracking of the asphalt that's come to it?
No. No, the, back in oh six, the road had been inspected by the review engineer at the time, field engineering. And then again, he had comments that were addressed either by Mr. Costa or by us, and he has no portion of it, and I had addressed some of those in the, in my cover letter. The planning board had requested in fourteen, it was brought before them, and they had requested a couple of things. Those are all addressed either by Mr. Costa or myself. So I would say it's been at least since two thousand and six that that protocol's been on it. And as I said, it's not allowed traffic on that road. It only services three or four houses. And I would say it's a well-maintained road.
You ready?
Any other questions?
No.
Good.
I'll make a motion to approve the intention to lay out the way and places, a warrant article, and let the record show as well that there were eight waivers granted by the planning board.
Second. Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay.
Make a motion to approve the layout as shown on the street acceptance plan. Again, let the record show that there were eight waivers granted by the planning board.
Second. Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? No. Okay.
Thank you very much.
That's a good-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not good at the clothing part. You should see my clothes, I just throw 'em in the drawer.
I find that very hot. Okay, so it's now six minutes past six, so we're already into the second public hearing. This public hearing has to do with the acceptance of King Phillips Way, product at King Phillips Way and Jordan Lane up in Proprietary Acres, which is off of the road. Anybody here representing?
I'm here. I'm Al Ewing, Ewing Engineering. I've been the design engineer on this project for a few years. And the acceptance of these two streets pretty much completes this subdivision toward the end of the property. And we've submitted everything as votes and street acceptance plans to the planning board.
Okay. I'm gonna read the information from the planning board, also dated April twenty-second. Honorable Board of Selectmen, the board, the planning board voted to recommend King Phillips Way and Jordan Lane, the Proprietary Acres subdivision for acceptance at town meeting on the condition that a minor revision to the ASK plan be documented and delivered to the planning board. I contacted Laura Monroe, a planning technician today of our planning board, and asked her if the document had been submitted. She said on April twenty-seventh, two thousand and sixteen, they did bring in the document. What was lacking was an engineer stamp on the, on the plan. And that was done. And I talked to her today, this afternoon, at about one o'clock. So that's all taken care of. Anybody want to?
Do you know how many waivers, been there any waivers on that?
I don't. I won't.
No waivers?
Mr. Chair. A resident came in who owns property on one of these streets last Friday and asked if I could find out whether or not there's a business operating on Jordan Lane near the intersection. Apparently, there's, looks like there's work being done on the garage, there doesn't appear to be a house on that property.
There isn't a house on that?
I don't think so. According to what he said, there's a lot of trash in the, along the road, and apparently he at least wanted, he couldn't be in, he asked me to ask whether the, whether they knew of any businesses being run in that area.
There are absolutely not any businesses allowed in that area.
I understand.
I know it's on, maybe individual, an individual there who does some work in it.
Around his garage.
Possibly, yes. I know, I think there is a, sort of an ISO property there.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Doesn't have anything to do with the road?
That should have location one. At the town hall. Board of Selectmen, your pleasure.
Make a motion to approve on the board intention to lay out the way and place as a warrant article.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Can you, yeah, let the record state that there were no plans here and I don't know what the waivers, uh, that were granted, but the, um, applicant said that there were none. So, I just want the record to show that.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No one opposed? unanimous? Okay. Lisa, you got another motion?
Yeah, um, I'll vote to approve the layout as shown, um, as a street acceptance plan again. Let, let the record show that there were no plans available at this meeting. We were at town hall. Um, and that, uh, I don't know if there were any waivers granted by the planning board.
Second. Motion made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No one opposed? unanimous? Good.
Good night, Al.
Good night.
Okay, the next thing we have is a meeting with residents reviving a fire at their home and a request for a mobile home permit for a year. Anybody here representing? Your name for the record?
Janine Sora.
You're a member from somewhere?
My husband had surgery this afternoon, so I couldn't be here.
Okay. Will you tell us, tell the board what, why you requesting this?
So, um, it appears that it's gonna be a total, um, rebuild from the fire damage. So, they brought in a, uh, house trailer for it to live in while it's re, has reconstruction. It sounds like they're gonna, um, rebuild from the foundation back up again.
Okay, that fire was two weeks ago?
It was late, um, tax day. Yeah. Yeah.
So, fifteenth, sixteenth, seventeenth, something like that? Okay.
Fifteenth.
Our health agent is here. Did you do an inspection of the subject system and so forth?
We had a Title V inspector out there. Um, he verbally told me that it's pa- it passed. I haven't received anything yet. I guess he's having some problems with the fax machine. It's like, I'll get it to you, I'll get it to you, but he hasn't got it to me. So, I confirmed over the phone. It did pass.
Okay.
So, it's good on that.
That's good.
So, it's up.
He should be, um, he'll submit it tomorrow, he said.
Okay.
So, the request is a request that we would, um, consider because the fire can't live there and, um, this way here. So, one year permit, the way I understand it, it could be extended if, for any reason, but.
And the mobile will tie, be tied right into the existing system, yes?
Okay. You would have any questions?
No, I hope it goes quicker for you.
Yes, I too.
I'll make a motion to, uh, I'll make a motion to give the variance for the mobile home.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, that's taken care of. Briefly public discussion. Anybody here to address the board's?
Wendy Grasha. I'm not here to represent Self-Trust United. I'm here to represent myself as a resident of Freetown.
What is your name again?
Wendy Grasha. I'm Dr. Bailey Road. Once again bringing to you the attention of...
Is ready? All right. We're gonna open the board of selectmen's meeting Monday, May second, two thousand and thirteen. President Ah, Paul Sadie. Lisa Pacheco. Ramon Jones, three selectmen. Jack Healy, town administrator. Alec Alsar, administrative assistant. Anybody recording the meeting?
Free cam.
Free cam. Anybody else recording the meeting? Nope? Okay. Very good. The first thing on the agenda is a public meeting regarding the acceptance of Costa Drive. Anybody here representing Costa Drive? Want sir?
Should I go?
Anybody else? Sure, one up. For the record, can you state your name?
Brad Fitzgerald, SFG Associates Engineering.
Engineering, for Costa Drive?
Did the, asked the engineer.
Okay. Your name, ma'am?
Anthony Costa, Anthony Costa's daughter.
Okay. All right. So, we, uh, the town of Freetown received a request, um, for the board of selectmen to lay out Costa Drive as a public way. This was, uh, a letter was sent to any abut within three hundred feet of that property and that roadway, and it was also posted at the town hall. So, we're gonna begin the, uh, the layout and then, uh, take the votes, uh, by the board of selectmen. The, uh, planning board, uh, sent the board of selectmen a letter dated April twenty-second. This letter is to serve to inform you that the planning board voted to recommend Costa Drive for acceptance at, at the town meeting. So, the planning board is good with Costa Drive. And, uh, anybody have any questions regarding Costa Drive up here at the board?
No.
Do you wanna explain what's going on?
Sure. This road, uh, it's been going for a while. It's been, um, it's about a seventy fifty foot long road. It's a seventy foot wide right-of-way with about twenty-four feet of pavement. Four catch basins and a detention basin at the end of the side.
Might I put it up here?
Sure.
These plans were also available at the town clerk's office, right here, through you.
So, the road was put in pretty much to the approved plans, um, both in, uh, vertically and horizontal. It's a little, it's offset because it's a seventy foot wide right-of-way. You get the detention basin down here. It's got the, um, settling basin probably going in there, and then it gives a spillway with a, a wear on the back end of the detention basin. They're all, uh, constructed to, uh, within problems of the, of the approved plans. It's a very well-maintained basin, um, the only better ones I've seen maintained. It is within a, uh, drainage easement that encompasses two lots down at the end. And that's, yeah, pretty much what we have.
How long did it take since the final, sort of asphalt was put down?
It's been years, I believe, man.
Yes.
It's the final proof?
Back in, um, see what it was. The right letter. Looks like.
Any cracking of deep into the asphalt that's come with it?
No. No, the, uh, back in, um, oh six, the, the road had been inspected by, um, the review engineer at the time, field engineering. Again, he had comments that were addressed either by Mr. Costa or by us in the Asbou portion of it, and I had addressed some of those in the, um, in the, in my cover letter. The planning board had requested in fourteen, it was brought before them, and they, they had requested a couple of things. Those are all addressed either by Mr. Costa or myself. So, I would say it's been at least since two thousand and six that that protocol's been on there. And, as I said, it's not allowed traffic on that road. Uh, it only services three or four houses. And, um, I'd say it's a well-maintained road.
Um, you ready?
Any other questions?
No.
Good.
I'll make a motion to approve the intention to lay out the way and place as a warrant article and let the record show as well that there were eight waivers granted by the planning board.
Second. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
Make a motion to approve the layout as shown on the street acceptance plan again. Let, let the record show that there were eight waivers granted by the planning board.
Second. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? No? Okay.
Thank you very much.
That's a good.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, I'm not fit at the, I'm holding hard. You should see my clothes. I just throw them in the drawer.
I find that very hot. Okay, so, it's now six minutes past six, so we're already into the second, um, public hearing. This public hearing has to do with the acceptance of, um, King Phillips Way, Attic, uh, King Phillips Way and Jordan Lane up in proprietary acres, which is off of the road. Anybody here representing?
I'm here. I'm Al Ewing, Ewing Engineering. I've been the design engineer on this project for a few years. The acceptance of these two streets pretty much completes this subdivision at the end of the property. We've submitted everything as votes and, and street acceptance plans to the planning board.
Okay, I'm gonna read, uh, the information from the planning board, also dated April twenty-second. Honorable Board of Selectmen, the board, uh, the, uh, planning board voted to recommend King Phillips Way and Jordan Lane proprietary acre subdivision for acceptance at town meeting on the condition that a minor revision to the Asbou plan be documented and delivered to the planning board. I contacted Laura Monroe, uh, planning technician today of our planning board and asked her if the, uh, the document had been submitted. She said on April twenty-seventh, uh, two thousand and sixteen, they did bring in the document. What was lacking was an engineer stamp on the, uh, on the plan. And that was done, and I talked to her today, uh, this afternoon at, uh, at about one o'clock. So, that's all taken care of. Anybody want to, um?
Do you know how many waivers, did there are any waivers on that?
I don't know.
No waivers?
A resident came in, uh, who owns property on one of these streets last Friday and asked, uh, if I could find out whether or not there's a business, uh, operating on Jo- Jordan Lane near the intersection. Apparently, there's, uh, it looks like there's work being done out of a garage. There doesn't appear to be a house on that property.
There isn't a house on it?
I don't think so. Uh, according to what he said, there's a lot of trash, uh, in the, along the road and, uh, and apparently, he at least wanted, he can't, couldn't be in, somebody asked me to ask whether the, whether the applicant knew of any businesses being run in that area.
There are absolutely not any businesses allowed in that area.
I understand.
My knowledge that are none. Maybe individual, an individual there who does some work in his area.
Around his garage?
Possibly, yes. I know, I think there is a, sort of an ISO property there.
Okay. Thank you.
Doesn't have anything to do with the road?
That should have location one.
Has nothing to do with it.
At the town hall. Board of Selectmen, your pleasure.
Make a motion to approve on the board intention to lay out the way and place as a warrant article.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Can you, yeah, let the record state that there were no plans here and I don't know what the waivers, uh, that were granted, but the, um, applicant said that there were none. So, I just want the record to show that.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No one opposed? unanimous? Okay. Lisa, you got another motion?
Yeah, um, I'll vote to approve the layout as shown, um, as a street acceptance plan again. Let, let the record show that there were no plans available at this meeting. We were at town hall. Um, and that, uh, I don't know if there were any waivers granted by the planning board.
Second. Motion made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No one opposed? unanimous? Good.
Good night, Al.
Good night.
Okay, the next thing we have is a meeting with residents reviving a fire at their home and a request for a mobile home permit for a year. Anybody here representing? Your name for the record?
Janine Sora. My husband had surgery this afternoon, so I couldn't be here.
Okay. Will you tell us, tell the board what, why you requesting this?
So, um, it appears that it's gonna be a total, um, rebuild from the fire damage. So, they brought in a, uh, house trailer for it to live in while it's re, has reconstruction. It sounds like they're gonna, um, rebuild from the foundation back up again.
Okay, that fire was two weeks ago?
It was late, um, tax day. Yeah. Yeah.
So, fifteenth, sixteenth, seventeenth, something like that? Okay. Our health agent is here. Did you do an inspection of the subject system and so forth?
We had a Title V inspector out there. Um, he verbally told me that it's pa- it passed. I haven't received anything yet. I guess he's having some problems with the fax machine. It's like, I'll get it to you, I'll get it to you, but he hasn't got it to me. So, I confirmed over the phone. It did pass.
Okay.
So, it's good on that.
That's good.
And he should be, um, he'll submit it tomorrow, he said.
Okay.
So, the request is a request that we would, um, consider because the fire can't live there and, um, this way here. So, one year permit, the way I understand it, it could be extended if, for any reason, but.
And the mobile will tie, be tied right into the existing system, yes?
Okay. You would have any questions?
No, I hope it goes quicker for you.
Yes, I too.
I'll make a motion to, uh, I'll make a motion to give the variance for the mobile home.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, that's taken care of. Briefly public discussion. Anybody here to address the board's?
Wendy Grasha. I'm not here to represent Self-Trust United. I'm here to represent myself as a resident of Freetown.
What is your name again?
Wendy Grasha. I'm Dr. Bailey Road. Once again bringing to you the attention...